Be with those delegates who are being introduced tonight going to Japan. Lord, we pray that you would be with them. May their trip be great and a wonderful experience if they can come back and share with us. As we go from here this evening, Lord, be with us. Help us to do your will. We'll give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
Please join me in the flag salute. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. Item one, consider approval of a consent agenda. Commissioner Shaw has requested that item one A, which is the minutes from the last meeting, be pulled for a correction. So, absent that, would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item one A.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any further discussion? Call question. Motion carries seven oh. Item two, citizens' participation. This is the...
We need to clarify.
One A.
Oh, sorry. I'm ahead.
City manager and city attorney, I noted that on one A on page five, the first paragraph at the end of it, it stated, "It passed, the sales tax shall be levied beginning on October 1st, 2018, and shall cease after September 30th, 2028." We had quite a bit of clarification around that to where that it would sunset unless there was any action taken by the city on September 30th, 2028.
Yes, ma'am. That word "after" should just say "on," O-N.
If we could have that correction made. So it should be, shall cease on. Thank you. Mayor, that was all I had on that.
There's a motion to make that correction. Is there a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Rutherford. Call question. Motion carries seven oh. Now, item two, citizens' participation. This is the time where citizens may come to the podium and address us for whatever reason that they feel like they need to. We have a three-minute per person limit and a 12-minute per topic limit. If you would like to address the commission and come to the podium, introduce yourself and sign in. Anyone? Okay. Item three, introduction of the Shawnee 2018 Student/Teacher Delegation for Exchange Trip to Nikahoe, Japan. I'd like to introduce Michael Kennedy, who will come to the front and introduce the remaining of, the remainder of the group.
Awesome. Thank you. My name is Michael Kennedy. I am the chairperson this year for 2018 for the Sister Cities Committee. And I am very pleased to introduce Lotta Loftus. She's our translator this year and has been for several years. Connie Walker, she is from Horace Mann Elementary. We have Luke Dyer from Grove, Audrey Gaines from Grove, Hope Hannah from North Rock Creek, Phoenix Hindman from Shawnee Middle School, Allison Holter from Grove. Oh, you can paste that. Mia Jennings from Shawnee Middle School, Emma Monhae from Grove, Daniel Phillips from Shawnee Middle School, Diane Steve Pore from Shawnee Middle School, Ally Ratcliffe from Shawnee Middle School, Desiree Simmons from Shawnee Middle School, and Olivia Steen, also from Shawnee Middle School.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of you for being selected, and I'm certain that you will do a good job of representing us and have a good time, enjoy the process, and learn about the culture, and you can come back and tell us a little bit. Thank you.
I have my name. This will be... This will be an experience that you'll remember the rest of your life. I went when I was in the commission between '92 and 2000, and it was something that, again, I will never forget. The hospitality will amaze you. The people will amaze you. And I'm sure that you will represent us as the mayor said wanted, please. Thank you.
While you're eating, don't ask what all the food is.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Good luck. Have a good trip.
We have a couple of proclamations.
Family Promise Day. Whereas homelessness can and does affect entire families in any community, whereas Family Promise of Shawnee offers health and hope, regains self-sufficiency to homeless families with children and homeless pregnant women, giving them a chance to build a better future through collective efforts of local contribution, businesses, service, social service programs, educational institutions, and individual efforts. Whereas the volunteers of Family Promise of Shawnee dedicate themselves to this program by offering hope when all is lost, dignity when others look away, in recognition for the value of the human spirit. Whereas individuals consistently and unselfishly donate their time, resources, skills, and expertise to ensure that the homeless families with children and pregnant women are able to have a home, a livelihood, and the opportunity to build a better future. Whereas the purpose of Family Promise Day is to inspire others to recognize the innate need of dignity and hope for all human beings. Now, therefore, I request the incumbent mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, to hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 24th, as Family Promise Day.
Great job. I know you all do really good work.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Don Pumpley. It's Loyalty Day. Whereas on May 1st, 1958, President Dwight D. Eisenhower declared Loyalty Day as a day of national observance and has been recognized annually since. Whereas American loyalty, loyalty to American democracy, freedom, and foreign pride, appreciation, and understanding of our country, and we are loyal to our American, our thought, citizens, and these ideas. And whereas this proclamation serves as an opportunity to recognize those who demonstrate their commitment to our country through service and sacrifice, and that serve is a model for all Americans. And whereas this proclamation recognizes the monumental achievements and valuable contributions made by Americans that have led to America's founding principles, enduring, guiding our nation toward progress and prosperity, allowing the United States to be a leader among nations of the world. Whereas this proclamation commends those honorable men and women who have demonstrated their loyalty to America by making remarkable sacrifices to preserve and protect these values, representing thousands of Oklahomans residing in every county who already have made the observance of Loyalty Day a success. Now, therefore, I request the incumbent mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, to hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 1st, as Loyalty Day.
Item five, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, it's my privilege to introduce Sandra Hearn. Come on up. Thank you. Sandra started working with the city of Shawnee in February of 2014. She is a customer service clerk in the water department. During some recent winter weather, Sandra was the only clerk that made it into work. She worked all day and handled every call and customer by herself. Sandra is always polite and helpful to customers as well as fellow employees. As you might imagine, working in the, at the utility window can be stressful at times, and Sandra does a great job working with customers and citizens to work through their issues and get their accounts clear. She's been married to her high school sweetheart, Brian, for 35 years. They have twin daughters. Their twin daughters each have a daughter, Peyton and Leah, who Sandra loves spending time with. Sandra enjoys spending time with her family and watching her granddaughter's ball games, which she is on her way to right now. So, we're gonna let her be out here pretty quickly. Sandra, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
And let's let them take a quick photo. You appreciate how I let you go. Good evening.
Item six, public hearing and consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at 4900 North Harrison Avenue from C-3 Highway Commercial to PUD Plan Unit Development, Case Number PO518, applicant TLP Associates, Inc. This item has been deferred by the planning commission.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Staff request to be for the commission to defer this to your May 7th meeting, please.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod to defer to May 7th. Who was the second? Bouchon? Is there any further discussion? Item seven, consideration of approval of preliminary plat for Shawnee Retail Center located at 4900 North Harrison Avenue, Case Number SO318, applicant TLP Associates, Inc. Also deferred by the planning commission until their May 2nd meeting.
Mayor, quickly, could you vote on the last?
If we have to. Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you.
Staff request the same action here. Please defer till May 7th.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Bouchon. Second by Commissioner Harrod. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight, public hearing and consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at 2327 North Harrison Avenue from CP Plan Shopping Center District to C-3 Highway Commercial District, Case Number PO718, applicant Amerco Real Estate Company.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission members, there, you might recall at your last meeting, it was actually two meetings ago, about a month ago, you discussed this case in depth. We have included some additional information in your packet that was presented by the applicant. Staff has also worked to address some of the concerns that were expressed by the public through a formal agreement between the city and the applicant. Since you do not normally have the ability to place conditions on rezoning applications, this secondary agreement would allow for them to self-select these conditions. And I believe the city attorneys, Mr. Vonnard's worked on some of those conditions, and he can go over those in just a little greater detail.
Yeah, this has been pretty fluid here over the last 48 hours or so, but this is what has been proposed, and I believe that the representatives from the applicant are prepared to accept as conditions to be formalized in agreement. The first being regarding fencing or vegetated barrier that U-Haul shall construct and maintain at its own expense, a fence or vegetated barrier built of workmanlike quality within regulations of the existing city zoning code and of workmanlike quality along the entire eastern border of the subject property, subject to existing easements rights away, and that that fence would be approximately six feet in height. Second condition would be that no equipment would be stored on the east side of the building, which is that side of the building closest to the residential areas. That would include truck, vans, cars, storage facility, cargo unit, mobile office, garage, propane storage tank, and/or facility, or any other equipment to be parked or fixed on the east side. The third being no docking or commercial accessibility on the east side of the building, which has been agreed to. And number four, that they would, U-Haul would agree to, at their own expense, provide informational literature to its customers and direct them not to utilize certain neighboring roads as primary ingress and egress when bringing trucks back and forth from rentals.
Returning big enough drugs.
Correct. And that would be the, obviously, the residential streets that adjoin that rise, Gilpin, and is it Dunlop?
Dunlop.
Yeah. So those are the conditions that have been requested and have been preliminarily agreed to by U-Haul, and I believe they're prepared to accept as conditions of approval today. And I suspect that we should be able to formalize the agreement that is in draft form this week, if that's the will of the commission.
So we should, I should open the public hearing?
I think so.
Public hearing is hereby open. Justin, do you have anything further to say?
No, sir.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Come to the podium and introduce yourself, sign in.
I'm Amy Isbell, resident on Gilpin. And thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for giving me the opportunity to speak. He touched on the main issue that I'm concerned about as a mother in the, on Gilpin. I don't know if everybody realizes how often people use that as a thoroughfare to avoid the stoplight at Harrison and Federal. You have people driving large vehicles that, you know, they don't necessarily need CDLs or anything like that, but they're larger vehicles than what people are used to handling. And so you get somebody who takes the north egress, and they don't want to go up the hill where Walls is, because that's narrow. They're not used to driving a vehicle that size. Harrison's busy. I can see them using that north side to go down our streets where I have children. I've counted no less than 20 homes that have either children, grandchildren, that are there all the time. And then you have somebody who really doesn't, doesn't drive vehicles of that size. In addition, a preliminary theme that I see when I look into these types of storage facilities coming into a region is crime. I believe they touched on this the last time, crime that goes on inside, drugs and the like. And I do happen to have friends who own the facility and to come so where murder took place. It does tend to, there's things that happen there, and that's a prevailing theme when you look on Google and you Google these things. As a mother of three girls and having, you know, I know a lot of these children that are around here, the element that it attracts. The third point is, I feel like it's kind of an eyesore. They said that they would make it aesthetically pleasing, landscape, I believe, last, when last we met. I've not seen evidence of that in the other U-Haul facilities that we have here in town, two or three that I've counted, living in the area, property owner, worked on my house. I see an eyesore. I see too hurried a response. This has just been vacant since October, and it's something that very few people will be able to really use, and we have a lot of them already. And basically, just the safety issue of, I want to go back to that. I'll give other people more time, but as a mother, I am concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else?
My name is Mike Johnson. I'm also a resident on Gilpin. Thank you for the opportunity to address you on these matters. I have the same concerns that Amy has. I have a seven-year-old little boy that's always playing. I was a truck driver for 35 years. I've seen what people that can't drive or don't drive a truck that size, the accidents they get into. It only takes one. Look at now at Harrison, I just did a quick check before I came down here. There are three U-Haul facilities on Harrison here in the city of Shawnee right now. There are U-Haul, I mean rental units everywhere, all over Shawnee. Anywhere you turn nearly, you can find a place to store your stuff if you want to pay the rent for it. We have a self-contained, climate-controlled storage facility out on MacArthur. To my understanding, is never at capacity. So why do we need one put in, in this facility here in the old Kmart building? Why do we need what I see as turning into a repair shop for their vehicles? And as Amy brought up, I see it as an eyesore. I just personally feel like that if the city of Shawnee wants to do something to put a business in there that is more utilized by the larger public than just a small percentage that needs a rider truck, you know, there's six or nine places here in Shawnee that they can go get one. So that's not a problem, to find one. I would, I just think that Shawnee can use that facility as something that the larger population can use as some type of commercial property, whether it be a grocery store, whatever it happens to be, you know, can be utilized by the public much better than what a U-Haul facility can operate, you know? And personally, I'm not real crazy about having 500-gallon tank of propane sitting within a, less than a quarter of a mile of my house. I don't care which direction it's pointed, you know? I've dealt with anhydrous ammonia for years, and I've seen what happens when those tanks blow up. I don't want that happen in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Cheryl Thomas, and I also live on Gilpin.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Thomas. And I...
There you guys turn the mic down.
I'm short. Cheryl Thomas, and I also live on Gilpin. I have the same concerns that Mike and Amy have, but I also am concerned about the other U-Haul and rental storage companies here in town. We're not taking care of them if we let somebody else move in, and that's what I think.
Hello, I'm Lorie Hopkins, and I appreciate you listening to me again. Realized after last time, I became a little bit of a celebrity, not knowing that standing up here to speak, sometimes people would feel more comfortable calling someone who had spoken than calling you all directly. I did receive several phone calls, and a couple of people came by my office, and the concerns that are being issued from these homeowners and what was talked about last time are the repeated issue, the security, what have you. I do commend the company on making some efforts to meet some of those concerns. I have been a little surprised at, and kind of a new issue I hadn't thought about. We're a business, and, you know, Shawnee is kind of one of the first major communities if you're coming from the south and the east, and so a lot of our patients are from surrounding communities. And it's been ironic that since the last meeting, I've had several people say, "So what's going in next door where Kmart used to be?" And I'll tell them what, you know, I'll say it's a U-Haul and a climate-controlled self-storage, and not issuing any opinion other than to state that. And I have, from every single person heard, "Ah, I wish it was something we could use." And so that's, when you, when you have homeowners that have some very legitimate concerns, and then I keep hearing the reoccurring theme of, "Ah, I wish Shawnee would benefit from it," or "I wish me, I as a consumer would benefit from it." I would just like for you all to weigh that, and I appreciate, I know this is a difficult decision, and I think this is probably a very reputable company that's making an honest investment in our community, but I think the repeated, "Is it necessary and is it to our benefit?" needs to be taken into consideration. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lorie. Anyone else? Public hearing is declared close. Are there any comments or discussion among the board?
Are the U-Haul people here?
Yes, they are. Would you like to hear from them?
I have a question or two for them, if you don't mind. Are, are you gonna handle most of the rentals here, or are there still gonna be other places to rent them, or are you gonna handle most of them?
There will be still dealerships in town, independent dealers that rent out equipment. Yes, sir.
Okay. So that won't be, just all of the units won't be stored right there?
No, sir.
Well, I'm, we've had independent storage and used to, at U-Haul rental equipment, and I can understand some of the concerns about the things. We never had any problems with drugs, never had any problem. We, ours were secure with fence, and everybody had to have a combination number to get in, there's lightings and cameras and what you're proposing too. And somebody expressed concern about homeless. We never had any problem with the homeless or anyone coming in. First of all, gotta have a code to get in there, gotta have a card in your case.
Yes, sir.
So, but yeah, I was concerned about the other business in Shawnee that have the U-Hauls, if you're gonna take those or just operate strictly out of the one concern, are gonna have to use the subcontractors.
No, they'd still have the little independent dealers. They, they may have a little bit less equipment coming into them.
Stowed around.
Because some of, most of, or some of it would be coming into there that would normally go to the independent dealers.
Right.
So, they would probably have less.
So, having heard these individuals, these residents that live in these neighborhoods that are near you.
Right.
What is your thought about reconciling some of their concerns? I've heard what our city attorney has indicated that you're willing to do and concede on it, and I certainly appreciate that.
Sure.
However, that doesn't address these individuals' concerns from what I heard. The area of security, to me, is appearing as a big issue. The area of landscaping aesthetically pleasing along that area, to me, is a business district. Is one that I want to see kept clean and well-maintained and run well.
Right.
And safety. I mean, what assure, assurances can you give these families that are there that their children will be protected, that there won't be any incidents or accidents? And I guess Chief Mason could tell us more about what he finds around different storage units, but I live over on Independence, and I use Merco's storage unit that's over there, and I don't have any incidents or problems, and you do maintain it well. However, there is crime around it. There is problems around it. So I certainly understand these residents' concerns.
Yes, ma'am.
So, educate me.
Okay. A lot of what they see, the first thing I'll talk about is our imaging package, what we do to our corporate stores versus the independent store. Our independent stores that y'all are used to seeing here in Shawnee, they just are basically independent contractors. We don't actually go in, that's not corporate U-Haul. It's, that's really up to them to maintain their facilities. At our corporate locations, we're gonna have a better base lift, a better imaging package. We'll have, it'll, it's gonna look very, very nice. We'll try to fit into the community, you know, as long as it's agreed upon with the city. As far as security, we take our security very, very seriously at our corporate stores. Safety, you know, I have basically 16 storage facilities here in Oklahoma that I personally manage, and yes, we've had some homeless people try to stay there, but we're usually right on top of it. We get them, you know, out, and we'll evict them from the storage if they do try to stay there. Not only is it against the law, but it is against our policies.
Okay. I heard you say security, but I didn't hear what you were going to do. Are you gonna have cameras on the premises? Are you going to have an assigned staff person or a security person that monitors those units or educate?
Okay. Whenever we're open, there'll be, of course, people that are looking or going back there to stories to check. When we're not open, of course, we'll have cameras, we'll have individual alarms on the rooms. Anyone that accesses any room will have record of it.
Anyone that accesses any room will have record of it. They will need a card swipe basically to, to access the building. Once they get in the building, the card swipe just disables their room. So the alarm will be cut off to their room, they'll be able to go to their room and only their room. If they go to a different room and, and set the alarm off, we'll know about it. We do have people that monitor at night when the alarm goes off. We actually, it gets sent to Phoenix, Arizona, that monitors our alarms, and then they call either me or the general manager that's on site to respond. And we have to either, you know, look on the cameras to see if it's just the wind or, or whatever it is, or we have to go up there ourselves and, and check it out, so.
Okay, and you said, I heard fencing, six-foot fencing.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that going to be aesthetically pleasing for these residents, or are they?
Sure, you know, what we, we can do it either, either way, however, whatever's better for everyone. We thought about putting a row of trees back there, you know, be better for the environment, that would block out more noise if there's, if there is noise. And, or, I mean, we can put the six-foot fence, we don't have a problem doing either one. I'm good with whichever one y'all prefer us to put.
Got a question. You see the larger vehicles, if you have those entering and exiting typically off of Harrison?
Right.
Rather than going to the, the north or south?
Right.
And making that sharp corner?
Sure.
It would not be practical, generally speaking.
Right.
So they'd be, the traffic would exist basically going west and east from coming in and out of the buildings, right?
That's correct. What we did is we had them draw up a site plan, how, how we'd like to have it work, and it was drawn up that they would come in and out off of Harrison, basically, and pull up to the store off of Harrison in our, what we call a shunning lane, so that way the truck could be checked in right there.
It seems to be logical. Some of the concern was the large vehicles, which people wouldn't be as capable on exiting to the north or to the south, which would enter the normal populace rather than coming into the traffic of Harrison. And that doesn't seem practical to me, nor did I think you would be doing that. Plus, I think typically, these type of businesses have, don't have the same type of quantity of traffic traveling in and out of it as some other businesses. So typically cars, traffic is not generally a problem within, within an area that you live. It may create, it'll, people trying to get out on Harrison with a big vehicle, but typically not in the community, is that right?
That's correct. We'll, we'll probably generate 50 to 75 percent less traffic than the Kmart, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, considerably, I think.
Right. Yes, sir.
And I heard a concern of a 500 gallon tank that...
Of propane?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. That would be in our business plan to put propane as long as the city allows. You know, I, I, you know, we have them at basically, 17 in my stores, and we, we've never had a safety concern. I mean, it'd be regulated by the state. They would have to, you know, come out and inspect it to make sure that it did meet safety regulations, and, you know, there's, there's actually a big demand to build barbecue grills, things like that in the community.
And at your other corporate offices, educate me further, that 500 gallon community, or that 500 gallon propane tank, is, that's some of the near residences also?
Yes, ma'am. So at some places, depending on which location. We have one in Steelwater, which is, backs up right to a community, just like what here.
And has there been any incidents?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, well...
Well, actually, the propane's safer than the gasoline is.
Yes, sir, it is.
It is.
Now, one more thing, you said fit into the community in that area. We have some businesses that look really good and others that are just kind of in need, in need of some renovation, but, you know, I would hate for you to come in and build down.
No, ma'am. We wouldn't do that. We, we do have plans to redo the whole front of that, that building, paint it, to make it look very, very nice.
Fairly close to the pictures that we've seen.
Yes, sir.
I don't know who all has seen those, they were in our packet of, looked like a former Lowe's or...
Walmart and a Kmart that we've done across the country.
That look like brand-new buildings on the outside.
Is it possible, city manager, to get, if this is approved, to get a picture of that in the papers so that people can have an idea of what this is going to look like and not have the hesitancy that is being shown here today?
Certainly, yeah. And we don't have an exact photo at this time, but when they provide us one, perhaps as part of a building permit, then we'd be happy to share that, yes, ma'am.
But it's going to be in line with this, what we've seen?
Yes, sir.
There's four or five pictures on there that we've seen?
Yes, sir.
It's going to be in line with...
It'd be just like one of those.
I think you mentioned last time that after, after store hours, that access would be foot only?
Yes, sir. Through a, through a door basically that size. Yes, sir.
So they, they won't be driving in there at night?
Okay, well, current storages of yours are these little individual ones, they do?
Yeah. Theirs is basically, it's not all inside, since this would be all inside, we'd limit it to just a door like that, where you have to have a card swipe to get in and out. Now, there would be another access, but it, it won't be accessible after hours.
The access on Dunlop Street, I don't think we can close that onto Dunlop. Would the city be able to limit that, or you're just saying you're going to direct your people in and out off of Harrison, but that's still going to be open? Or could something be parked over there to make it not? Doesn't look real appealing to go out that way, or?
Right, no, I, how we had it grown up on the site, site plan, I mean, we could, we could look at it. How it's grown up now on the site plan, like I said, they'd come in off of Harrison. We'd use that a little bit over there as a little bit of extra parking, but I think that was all we had looked at so far.
Other questions? Comments? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I, I made copious notes at, at the last meeting that we had of the objections, and I, and I really have studied this very, very hard, and looked at the other options that are available from, from what the code allows, and I'm absolutely convinced that of the available options, this is the best option that's available for the residents. Your houses are well below grade, the fence should, should provide you plenty of, of cover in that regard. You know, we're not in a position to say, it's not up to us to market the building. Mr. Berg with the Economic Development Foundation has diligently tried to market the building, I know for a fact, and, and you say it hadn't been vacant that long, but you remember, I moved into this Safeway building after it'd been vacant for 20 years, so things like that do have a way of happening. And, and I just think, given all your concerns, if a grocery store comes in there or something like that, you're going to have traffic in the back, you're going to have lights in the back, you're going to have loading docks in the back, and, and in spite of the fact that you all don't like this, I, I personally am going to endorse it, and, and I wish you all would consider that as well.
There any further discussion? Their motion to approve the ordinance?
I would move to approve the C3 on the...
Moved by Commissioner Gillum.
And is that condition upon?
Condition on the four conditions that he set forth. Was there a second?
I'll say.
Commissioner Hare, is there any further discussion?
I do encourage you, Merco, to listen to what these residents have said, and to try to work with them because they are not only going to be the residents behind you, but potential consumers. And I would appreciate that.
I would mention that we built one on Independence there, and we used a, a black-coated fence so it wouldn't show up so much as a chain link or aluminum fence, and put a six-foot fence up, and then put a wrought iron fence around the front of it to make it attractive, and rock the front of it and everything, so it would blend in with the, with the other buildings around it. So I would encourage you to take a look at something like that, or even the trees and the fence.
Although that has had a tendency to be invaded pretty consistently lately with the homeless.
We have a motion and a second. You read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, Lot 7, Block 12, Northridge Edition, Fourth Section, being a subdivision of part of the north half of the, of Section 8, Township 10 North, Range 4 East of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, containing 5.964 acres, more or less. Rezoning said property from zoning classification CP, Plan Shopping Center District to C3, Highway Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Motion carries with five yay, one nay, and one abstention. Item nine, consideration of a preliminary plat for Maple Development LLC, located on Shawnee Mall Drive, east of the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad tracks, Case S 0418, applicant Sid and Javol Inc.
Mr. Mayor, the planning commission deferred action on this. Staff would request that you defer it until May 7th.
Is there a motion to defer?
I'll move.
Commissioner Hare again. Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Call the question. Motion carries seven. Item 10, consideration of final plat for Shawnee Trail Office Park, located on the southeast corner of 45th Street and Hyatt Road, Case Number S 0618, applicant Bonray Real Estate LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commission members. This item was heard at the April 4th Planning Commission meeting, where it did receive a unanimous recommendation for approval. There are eight conditions that are listed. There was no testimony in opposition, nor written correspondence in opposition. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but if there are none, staff does recommend approval, subject to the eight conditions.
It certainly seems like a lot of conditions there. Is there...
It is probably a couple more than typical. I think in this particular case, the, this is a, is a, this development features an office complex where you would have multiple office buildings sharing common access points and drives, and so that necessitated, I think, a little bit more consideration with access agreements and, and the like. So, that, that explains the, I think at least a couple of the extra conditions, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to adopt the plat.
Moved by Commissioner Hare to adopt the plat. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Call the question.
Are we making those subject to the eight conditions?
Absolutely.
That's where the decisions are, yeah.
Motion carries seven zero. Sales tax report.
Well, there's a sales tax report in your, in your packet. April was another down month. We were down 3.33 percent. Total income of $1,420,532. Overall, for the year, we are still up slightly. I don't think this is anything to panic over, but, but we are, you know, currently not meeting our budget projections. Thankfully, we've, we've cut back just a little bit on, on our spending and delayed some hiring, and we've had some retirements as well throughout the city, which is, which has assisted, so no, no dramatic measures at this point, just something that we're watching carefully, and hopefully things will turn around as the state economy turns around as well.
Any questions of Justin on the sales tax report?
Justin, was there any thought given by Cindy on why this might be occurring? I mean, I know it's, it's not much, but it is from, down from last year, although up for this year.
Yeah, I think there have been some, some layoffs at some, at some industrial plants in town. Also, I think the closing of St. Gregory's, the loss of that student population, as well as some of the employees and support staff have, have, have probably impacted that. That's, that's, of course, I don't have any quantitative data to prove that, but, but that's the best that we can tell is, and that would, roughly, that would be several hundred positions between, between St. Gregory's and some of the industrial...
About 300 to 400, state to state.
State, statewide, it looks like some, some cities are down about comparable to us, and some are, are up slightly. So I, this is not shocking, I don't think we compare us to other cities our size in the state. There's been some, definitely some variability.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. To the manager report, you're still up?
Yes, I am, and I'll be brief. We did launch the website two weeks ago, hopefully you've had a chance to, to get on there and use it a bit, and have found that pleasing. We've had pretty much universally positive feedback on it so far, and just wanted to thank that all the staff members that are a part of that process, and we'll continue to refine it, and you'll see continued additions and improvements on it as well going forward. Couple other quick announcements. The Red Bed Festival is this weekend. The, unfortunately, it does look like, like we may have some weather on, on Saturday, but the meal itself is on Friday, Friday evening, early evening, and it, hopefully that will, that will stay dry. Looks like the rain may come in late that, that day, so hopefully you can make at least part of that festival. Also wanted to update you on the traffic signal at I-40 and Harrison. We did have a traffic accident there that took out the signal on the, on the northwest corner, and if you traversed through there the last couple weeks, it was, the light there was blinking, and we actually have installed a temporary signal there and installed a, a pole to, to secure that. And so you might recall a few months ago, we had the situation on Hardesty Road where that, it takes about three months to get those signals in and those, and those, and those poles replaced, and so that is obviously a critical intersection, just like the one at Hardesty, and so we looked at alternatives and decided we could, we could expeditiously get a temporary signal installed there and, and eliminate that, that problem. So thank you to Michael Ludi and John Karwkey for that.
Yeah, Justin, on that particular thing, the lights were out on both sides, sides of the bridge, so does that pole help with...
It, it does. So the, all, both signals are connected through the same computer or brain, if you will, and so if, if any one of those goes down, it would...
All of them go off.
They all go off, and they all flash as a safety precaution, and so...
Well, that's all why they could be synchronized, where they'd be on at the same time and off at the same time. Would that be interconnected?
We are pursuing reimbursement through the insurance company as well, so hopefully there will be no, no cost incurred. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any new business?
No, sir.
Commissioner comments?
I have one thing. CNA Nominee is going to be singing. I'm sorry, did you touch up there? I'm good at that, you know.
Yes, you certainly are.
We're going to be singing Sunday at 3:00 and Monday at 7:30, and the programs are going to be a universal subject of love, and I think those who will witness this, I think will enjoy it. Some of the good old songs and some of the, some are a little more classic, some of the show songs and various others, so it will be coming up Sunday and Monday this week, so.
We're at it.
Oh, this will be at, yeah, that's a good one, right. Let's try University Baptist Church, and they will start their practice next to the last practice in less than 10 minutes, which I will be taking part of, by the way.
I would suggest that we go in reverse chronological order, but I don't know which one of you guys is next, so I'm going to skip right on down the dog.
Is there someone here but me? I don't know.
As many of you know, and some of you may not, I have made an extremely difficult decision not to rerun for this position. It has really been an honor and a privilege to serve on this board and with these individuals up here, and with all the city employees that I've had, I've had the pleasure of dealing with. I just, you know, wanted to put that out there for those of you that did not know that I had to make this extremely difficult decision, but I see great things coming forward in, in the city, and we'll get very competent people in here to, to fill this position, and we'll carry on and continue to grow. Thanks to everybody.
Can I add, add one word, please?
I think you exceeded your three-minute...
It's been my honor, it's been my honor to serve coffee to this fine gentleman for the last, well, better part of two years, and I really appreciate it him being here. Have some time left, so I will look at the plot again a few times, probably.
Thank you.
I have, I'm sorry all the people there, because we've worked with, I don't know if it's been any particular U-Haul people, but we've had U-Haul trucks and trailers and so forth at our storage when we owned it, and they've always been very cooperative in furnishing material. in furnishing material as we needed it and so forth. So we do appreciate it. I appreciate you guys doing all the thing you can to make this as comfortable as you can for the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you. Ron used my time.
He did use your time, Mr. Shaw.
Jump right on in. It's okay.
Like Commissioner Dubong said, that he wasn't going to run, I have been challenged by this ever since I began office, and it has been both a blessing and a curse, I think, at times, and certainly is something that I hope the next individual looks at and opens their arms a little more embracing. And I certainly hope the city embraces those of other races as well. And having said that, I'd like to say the city's website looks great. I found it easy to navigate through, and it was bright and colorful and cheerful, and I appreciate that. Recently, and I guess pretty consistently, I've been making comments in regard to the teachers, and I was really concerned over the recent walkouts from the aspect that the teachers, to me, were forced to have to move to this position that they themselves did not want to. And it is regrettable that the state of Oklahoma has such little foresight when they look at our teachers and an unwillingness to consistently aid them and give them those increases when they so readily deserve and need them. And I especially am very troubled with OEA and Alicia Priest. So having said all of that, I would like to encourage our teachers to continue to do the best that you can in our schools. You are deeply appreciated and loved by so many.
Well, of the three, I did file for reelection. And gonna be around for four more years. And to dovetail off of what the city manager had to say about the lights at I-40 and Harrison, I went through there today, and it's made a whole difference with the pole up on the northwest corner and the strands of wire pulled across for the lights for the westbound traffic coming off the interstate.
I agree. Good call on the lights. I get lots of, I don't get lots of requests. I've had a number of requests for people to put up a taller flagpole. And I would request that staff draft an ordinance for us to consider at some future meeting, allowing us to waive the height restrictions on residents that would like to fly United States flag. Other than that, I have no further comments, and we are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority.
Here she comes.
Here she comes. Let us do our consent agenda first, if you would. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Call the question. Motion carries seven a.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and thank you, Commissioners who are retiring for your service. And for those of you who are signing up again, we're signing up again. This evening, we have two actions which are positive news. It's free money. We always like that. We're asking that the Airport Authority authorize staff to accept any funds that may be offered to us by the Federal Aviation Administration. This is a little bit of a cart before the horse type of a discussion, in that what happens is, is the United States Congress has to authorize these funds to be released to the FAA, and then the FAA in turn has to release those funds to possible grant recipients. We usually have about a 72-hour opportunity to accept a grant or lose the money. So in that, we're hoping that with tonight's action, that the Airport Authority will agree to allow the staff and the city manager to accept any funds that may be offered from the FAA in support of this construction project. The project has been planned for many years. The budget is fairly firm, and the FAA has included it on their construction improvement program for the next five years, as has the airport here in Shawnee. So we're very much hoping, and we don't see any reason why we would not receive the $500,000 or so that the FAA is offering. But it is, again, a matter of them having to wait until such time as the final decision is made to release those funds. And then as that happens, and I'm sure some of you experienced this in the past, is a very, very narrow window. So this is a question for asking, when it comes, is it okay to take it? And I'd be happy to address any questions related to the project.
By is, on these funds, do they ever come with strings attached that might cause the scope to fall outside of what's been approved by previous commissions or recommended by staff?
There, yes, sir, there is always the possibility. While the plan itself and the preliminary engineering drawings and scope of work have been approved by the FAA here in Oklahoma, as the money does become available, there's always the hope that a little bit more will become available, which will allow us to do a little bit more. It's very rare that less happens. There is a small pavement margin that is abutting, or what will abut the actual hangers, hangers in, once they're built, that is in question. We have been given verbal assurances from the engineers, as well as the lady in charge at the FAA in Oklahoma City, from the Airport District Office, that they believe that they will go ahead and approve that margin of pavement right around the shadow of the building, but there is a slim possibility that that may shift, depending, again, on whether or not there's any challenges by the Congress as far as making the monies that have been programmed actually available.
There's nothing in there that would materially alter the operations or the aesthetics of the existing facility?
No, sir, not the operations or the aesthetic, but to be honest with you, that may shift some of the financial burden closer to the airport to pick up that margin. And while it doesn't seem like a great deal, say, two feet of a margin, two feet of a margin of concrete on a fairly large space could have the potential to increase our participant's share. The FAA is firm about what they have programmed. They will, of course, work with us to see if there's any available funds. Each, in the National Plan for Integrated Airport Systems, each airport in the country that's a part of that plan is allocated a certain amount of funds each year under what's called the entitlement program. That entitlement program is designed to support those facilities with the greatest amount of people and cargo movement. So if you're Chicago O'Hare, you get the biggest slice of the pie. And as you work down from that, then your percentage of that available funding goes down accordingly, based on your participation in the overall aviation system. From time to time, there's additional money made available by the Congress that goes into something called the discretionary fund. And the discretionary fund is where we see airports receiving funding over their algebraic entitlement. And so with any luck, there's extra money. We could get additional. If it's held directly to the letter of the law and the line of the drawings, we will be receiving the money that we have requested.
Justin, has this happened in the past?
I think with the, excuse me, not the Hager, the terminal building, I think we were fortunate to get a little extra funding. So it is, it hasn't happened in the past that I'm aware of where we received a reduction, as Bonnie stated. So I think this is a pretty firm commitment on funds, and hopefully we may even have a little, get a little extra.
We actually deferred some funds to some other airports in the past to enhance our position, didn't we?
I think there are options there, too, where you can take maybe two years' worth of funds and skip a year. So they...
It seems like that's how we got to find 100, because it was...
Right. There's one comment, when I came back here 27 years ago, had to take my airplane Seminole because it wasn't a place to hang it over here. So I'm glad to say this time we did get the funding.
Any further discussion among the board?
I do have a question as far as the 10% in the resolution stated by the city of Shawnee to contribute. That money is allocated and set aside, and everything's...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the standard match.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, or second by Commissioner, whatever his name is, Salter. I've only known him 50 years. Read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution accepting a grant offered from the US Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, for the construction of Tea Hangar Taxi Line, Taxi Lane Project Number 3-40-0088-018-2018 for the Shawnee Regional Airport.
Thank you. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. My apologies, Ben. Item three, discussion, consideration of publishing a request for bids for construction of taxi line and pad to support construction of tea hangers at Shawnee Regional Airport, contingent upon availability of funding.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. This is actually, again, the, now I guess we have the cart, wherein we are, again, going to be requested from the FAA to produce a hard bid figure at the time that the grant is offered. The FAA has, in the past, on occasion with a little bit of angst, gone ahead and made grant offers based on a firm engineer's construction estimate. It is their preference to make that grant offer and to close the deal with us based on an actual bid received from a construction contractor. So the request here from staff would be to publish a request for bid, invitation for bids, so that we are able to receive the bids in a timely fashion, review them with our planning and design engineer to ensure that we have complete competitive bids, and then ask for the bidders to hold their bids for 90 days, giving us the leeway necessary to receive the funding, and also working with the attorneys and others as necessary to ensure that all of the bidders understand that this opportunity is only offered contingent on the Federal Aviation Administration bringing forward the funds that have been programmed into the capital improvement plan for Shawnee.
Okay. Any questions?
I will allow the bids, request for bids.
Moved by Commissioner Herrick, second by Commissioner Bouchon. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, second by Commissioner Gillum. Call the question. You didn't register, Lisa.
It's Commissioner Shaw.
It was both of them. Motion carries seven o. Item two, consideration of approval of an expenditure of funds for the emergency sewer line rehabilitation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission members. I'll handle this item tonight. We, staff is requesting your authorization to award a bid in the amount of $62,465 to Kraft Reynolds to repair a collapsing sewer line. We are asking for you to declare an emergency and waive typical competitive bidding process. We did, however, although we didn't have, are requesting that emergency declaration, we did still, however, get three quotes so that we could ensure fiscal responsibility on this project. However, the timeliness is critical because the line is actually collapsing. It actually runs immediately adjacent, or actually underneath several houses. And we feel like the work, if we were to do the full 21-day bidding process and get your authorization, and then get the bonds, and the typical scope of work process takes at least six to eight weeks before the work would get done. Whereas with your action tonight, the contractor can actually get out there this week and make those repairs in the 600 block of West Wallace and the 600 block of West Wood.
We need to declare emergency first, so.
It can be done as part of the motion.
Okay. I'd move we declare the emergency and award the bid.
And moved by Commissioner Herrick to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bouchon. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.